Okay, I'd like to call and order the work session. The topics, and there's three topics listed, although they aren't listed in the order that we're going to take them. We're going to do the discussion related to storm water, to storm and wastewater regulations first, and then we'll move on to the barns, garages, and minor subdivisions topics. So, let's get started, Jennifer.
Thank you very much, county council, for joining us this afternoon and giving us as much time today as you have. You know, the 12 years that I've been here, we've never had as much of an in-depth conversation of what is our stormwater management program as we're hoping to have this evening in advance of seeking to introduce a new ordinance in the coming weeks. You had a presentation emailed to you. Do you mind?
Yeah, I just hardly hear.
Sorry about that. Had a presentation emailed to you in advance on Friday afternoon. The hard copy in front of you has got some very minor edits when we get back to the details of the ordinance section while we were doing a little bit more cleanup over the weekend. So, other than that, it's substantively similar. So, so that we can kind of level set for everyone, what exactly are we're talking about today? We're talking about stormwater management. And so, we're talking about rain that falls from the sky, lands on the ground, and travels through our storm drains into our creeks and streams. These storm events and this rainwater picks up contaminants as it's moving, and depending on the speed and the volume of that water can lead to flooding, erosion, and pollution, again, of our creeks and streams. And we don't talk about stormwater in depth at this level on a regular basis, but every council meeting almost, you all have folks coming before you wanting to talk about stormwater concerns, whether it's individuals who are concerned about a new subdivision coming in next door to them, and they are concerned that they're going to see increased runoff onto their property, or largely at community development staff level, the number of phone calls we receive from residents who live in old subdivisions who never had any stormwater management program as part of the development of their subdivision, and now are seeing significant concerns about erosion and flooding in their neighborhoods. And then also, you know, we've been focusing a lot, the Parks Department level over this last year, on how do we improve recreation opportunities on our creeks and streams. And so, the photos that you have on this slide and on this page are not, are not stock pictures. The property on the right is a property, an older area on Sharon Drive where, because of a lack of setbacks from the creek bank, you've seen that over time, that driveway has fallen completely and totally into that stream or creek bank. This picture on the left is Darden Creek. It actually doesn't look like that, hopefully today, though it's been raining quite a bit in the past few days. But this is Darden Creek where the Parks Department recently had a work day, and this is what Ryan calls the sea of floatables, because this is area entirely full of trash and debris from downed trees and other things that have floated and made their way to this area where we hope to be able to allow canoeing and recreation opportunities. And then you also know, many of you, Councilman Cronin in particular, who've had concerns from residents who've visited Indian Camp Creek over the past year, where we've had some significant algae blooms due to the pollution that's finding its way into Big Creek in that area of our county. And so, want to talk about the structures we have in place for water quality in St. Charles County and do a little bit of level setting on our regulatory context so that we understand why we're coming to talk to you about this today. So, our water quality program at this point has some significant history. In eighteen eighty-nine ninety-nine, sorry, eighteen ninety-nine was our first environmental law at the federal level that started to say that you could no longer discharge into waters of the United States and for the first time define what that was. We've had considerable amount of litigation over what that particular term means through a variety of other past acts since that time, and a lot of that litigation is just as important as the Congressional Act themselves, because they help define what are those real regulatory requirements. And so, the pieces that we're really kind of being forced into talking about today stem from the Clean Water Act in nineteen seventy-two, and then the Water Quality Act of eighty-seven, which set up a phased approach to the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. And so, that two-phased approach had two components, and we're only going to be talking about one of them today. Phase one was related to point source dischargers, so that's really thinking about, I can physically point to a thing that is causing the source of a pollution, like a large industrial plant or a major sewer system provider, or construction on a sizable amount of ground greater than five acres. That's not what we're talking about today. We're talking about our requirements under phase two of that system, which is non-point source discharging, and most of you know that we are regulated as a small MS4, so we have a small, separate municipal stormwater system. And so, everything that goes into that storm system and makes its way into our creeks and streams is regulated under our permit from the Department of Natural Resources through their permit from the State Department, or from the Federal Department of the EPA. So, our phase two requirements under our permit from the Department of Natural Resources contain six minimum control measures. Public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management, and pollution in our general government good house keep operations. Some of these pieces of our permit, we do really well. And even, you know, our last audit review from DNR, we got some significant accolades for education programs specifically hosted by former Parks employee Nick DeZuba on how to, you know, put in place rain gardens, et cetera, and to have some best practices by residents in our community. There was a time when our post-construction stormwater management program was at the forefront of environmental protection, when we started to include our non-structural BMPs and our bank, stream bank protection requirements. But on this particular measure, at this point, we have fallen significantly behind, and we have now gone through several audit rounds with DNR where they are stepping up their letter of warning to us to address this issue, or we'll be facing fines and penalties and other restrictions on our practices. And so, all we're going to be talking about today is this one area that we need to step up our efforts on post-construction stormwater management. So, our current state and solutions from a practical perspective. Practically, we have over ninety-five percent of our storm events that go undetained, unslowed, and untreated, and directly discharged into our ponds, rivers, and creeks. And like I said, cause pollution, erosion, and flooding, all of which you're very familiar with. We also, again, have a significant regulatory deficiency that at this point we cannot continue to ignore. I'll also mention, you know, we have had this regulatory finding and this letter of warning from a fairly friendly regulatory climate, both at the state level and the federal level, and despite that, it is time that we are being forced to deal with this particular item. And so, what we're coming for you today to discuss is an ordinance that will put in place some structural best management practices, and those are terms we'll talk a little bit more about in depth with Rich in a few minutes, to address water quality and new development and redevelopment areas that will protect our water infrastructure. So, our approach throughout St. Charles County, we're certainly not the first to deal with this issue. All five of our major cities, who are all separately small MS4s regulated by the Department of Natural Resources, have all passed their ordinances previously. This charting about a little bit out of order here, but O'Fallon has had their ordinance in place since two thousand eight, as has Wentzville. St. Peter's implemented their ordinance in two thousand twelve, Lake St. Louis in two thousand ten, and the city of St. Charles was last with adopting their ordinance in November of two thousand eighteen. And they all largely do the same thing, which is aim to protect water quality volume, or excuse me, to control water quality volume and establish channel protection volume rates and also peak flow rates. And we'll talk about that and hopefully not too heavily engineering language, but we can talk about it in as much detail as you all desire today. Nothing about our stormwater program is done in a vacuum. Everything about our stormwater management practices are done with significant public participation and involvement. And so, we established a group of stakeholders about eighteen to twenty-four months ago who've met with Division of Development Review to talk about the pros and cons of the varying approaches when our cities, to discuss goals about what our program should look like. Included the HBA and members of the home building industry, the engineering firms who commonly do a lot of work in St. Charles County, landscaping contractors, and they met to review preliminary drafts, give us comments, and work through some of the technical issues of the ordinance. We've also had elected official member participation on that. Councilman Klinghammer was attending those meetings prior to his departure from the county council. And then we also reached out to each of you verbally to let you know that we'd be posting the draft ordinance for public comment on our website. So, that was posted for a period of thirty days and solicited feedback to that ordinance draft, and we've considered, or received a considerable amount of written feedback. HBA in particular has given us many pages of comments and feedback, and we've been able to incorporate all of that feedback to be able to address those issues, with the exception of really one minor policy area, and we'll highlight that for you at the end of the conversation today and allow them, if they are able to make it, Emily is here, to be able to kind of voice some of their concerns and thoughts about that one particular item.
Excuse me, Jennifer.
Yes.
We were put on notice from which department?
Mike called each of you. Mike Hurlbert called each of you about forty-five to sixty days ago to let you know that we'd be having this ordinance coming forward and to watch the website so that you could share it with your friends if you wanted particular people to be able to weigh in.
Well, you said earlier, we were, we were sent notice from somebody that we were deficient in.
We have. We have copies of our audit findings from DNR with us today, if you'd like to review copies of those.
Okay.
Yeah. So, the goals that the stakeholder group, along with the department, established. One, we really want to be able to continue to encourage and incentivize non-structural best management practices so that we reduce the need as much as possible for structural BMPs. We want a flexible design. At this point, we're the last jurisdiction in St. Charles County to adopt their ordinance, so we don't want a developer who's done work in all five of our major cities to them have to come learn a new approach in order to be able to meet their county requirements. We want to be able to accept the approaches taken throughout all of our cities. We want to encourage best management practices that address a variety of water quality benefits all-in-one, so that you don't have to put in thing A to address problem X and thing B to address problem Y. We want you to be able to address as many issues as economically as, as possible, because it's also important to remember that not only since some of these structural items be expensive to implement, they can also be very expensive for homeowners associations who commonly own them to maintain them. We are not proposing at this time any conversation similar to some of our cities who have passed separate taxes to help support stormwater management infrastructure. So, in some of our cities today, they're coming to own and maintain detention basins throughout subdivisions in their community. That's not what we've proposed as a part of this ordinance. When you are required to put in a structural BMP, we want it to be an amenity to the development, not to be a nuisance. And then, most importantly, that I can't just skip over, we absolutely need to be meeting our regulatory expectations under our permit. So, I'm going to turn it over to Rich. She's going to walk through a little bit more of that language, first of all, on what is a structural versus a non-structural BMP, and then we're going to walk through segments of the ordinance today so that you've got an opportunity to take that with you and review it in depth at your leisure. Rich?
Did they give us the ordinance? We haven't seen you.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, one thing the county's been doing a very good job of, and we've been doing it for a while, is, and we have great regulations that are protecting our natural resources. And so, non-structural BMPs are something we consider as basically the preservation of the natural features of the site before development. It could also be something that you're going to recreate after you're done with development. So, we could go in and replant a buffer around a stream, or we could plant some additional tree canopy. We could modify some of the soils to make them soak into the ground like it used to be before we came in and compacted all that soil for the development and planted, or put sod on it. So, so those would be things that we consider non-structural BMPs, something that are more natural features that are treating the stormwater. And we've done a great job. Right now, we have a natural water course buffer preservation ordinance. We've had that since two thousand and two. To my knowledge, that was the first buffer preservation ordinance in the state of Missouri, so we, we were at the, we were the leaders in that, and I think we've been at the forefront of a lot of these non-structural preservations. That's what we have been heavy on to help try and reduce the cost of development. We have a tree preservation ordinance that limits the amount of tree canopy that you can take down during development. We have in our PUD and in our cluster developments, we have preservation of open spaces and slopes. We're trying to keep you away from those environmentally sensitive features on site during development. We currently have wastewater and solid waste disposal regulations. We have recycling and hazardous waste disposal programs, which helps address solid waste and dumping issues. And then we also have educational outreach, not, not only for the citizens of the community, but also for the development community. We put on seminars, we do a lot of things to try and do outreach, both with the development community and the people that have to maintain these facilities later on. So, rather than require additional regulation to these non-structural BMPs, what we tried to do was incentivize the use of more of them. And in doing that, that's going to help reduce the, the, the volume and, and the size of these structural BMPs that we're going to be proposing that you have to have to clean up some of your stormwater before we dump it back into our stream. So, what we're proposing is we're going to give you a credit for additional buffer protection. So, if you widen that buffer from twenty-five feet to fifty feet, we're going to reduce your requirement that you need to treat some of that stormwater runoff, because we're going to assume that that fifty-foot buffer is going to do that job. Again, if we, if we provide additional tree or open space preservation beyond the regulations, we're giving you more of those credits. We're going to, it's going to both reduce the, the volume of treatment you need, and it's going to reduce the amount of runoff that you get to these facilities, which will help to reduce the size and the cost of these.
Rich, right now, is that the water course buffer preservation? That's twenty-five feet per side?
It's twenty-five feet, except on a few of our bigger creeks, which is fifty feet, like Big Creek and Femo Sage and some of our bigger creeks.
Okay. So, we're not reducing any of that? We're just going to be able to add to it?
No, sir. Yeah, we're, we're keeping all of those, but in addition, we're incentivizing you to provide more of that. And in doing so, we'll reduce your requirements for what you need to do to clean up that water and dump it back in. So, we're also giving you credits and incentives for disconnecting your rooftops and impervious surfaces. If you provide open channel design, which would occur in some of your larger subdivision developments, and also, there are several different things for conservation and environmentally sensitive design. So, particularly in some of your three-to-five acre lot subdivisions, if you're preserving those soil conservation features on the site, you probably may not need to do any of these structural BMPs. So, that, that's how we tried to propose that.
When you said, when you said on the three-to-five acre subdivisions, you may not, who will decide whether or not this stuff?
You would have to fit, you would have to meet those credits that we've established. So, if your design meets those credits, you can reduce the volume that you may need, and we've done that in such a manner that you may not have to provide any structural.
And that's also part of any actual ordinance?
Yes. And it's probably, it's in the design criteria. The ordinance is going to turn you to that. So, these would be the structural requirements that we have. So, now, we can't always do this by preserving certain features on the site. There's still a lot of extra water that's being developed, that's put in by development. They're putting rooftops in, concrete, streets, driveways, outbuildings, things like that. So, now the water can't soak into the ground the way it used to be. We're generating both a greater volume of water of run, of, from the site and a rate of runoff from the site. And right now, basically, all that we're doing is over there on the left side, we're providing basically overbank flood protection. So, we're only looking at those large storm events, the two-year and the ten-year twenty-four hour storms, and we require stormwater detention for that, for those storm events. But that's just to control the rate of runoff from the site. So, all those storm events that are smaller than that, and just, just the other day, I got a text message from the director of our building, code enforcement, he was looking at one of our detention facilities and noted that all the water from a small rain event was just going down the concrete swale and right through the opening and out into the stream behind it. And I said, yes, that's right, because those things aren't designed to handle those small storm events. We are not trapping those. We are not cleaning those up. We're just trying to control those rates of runoff in the larger storm events, so we don't flood so many people downstream, we don't tear up our streams as much. So, what we need to do, and what DNR also found out that we needed to do, is we need to start treating these smaller storm events. And what we're proposing to do is, is basically provide water quality treatment for ninety percent of our storm events, and that's what everyone in our area is doing, and that's what everyone pretty much across the country is doing. Some of them go to ninety-five percent of all the storm events. So, essentially here, in our region, that equates to the first one point one four inches of, of rainfall. And that's where you're getting all your pollution from. If you go out on a nice rainy day after it just starts raining and it's mildly raining, and if you had driver's education in class, you are probably told to be very careful when you're driving around on the roads for that first start of the rainfall event or in small storm events, because that's where all the petroleum's coming up off of the road. And it's picked, and that's what, that's what happens in this non-point source solution is, all of our runoff, all the stormwater that runs off our ground is picking up these pollutants, whether it be pollutants from the road system, whether it be chemical fertilizers from people's lawns, whether it be pet waste, whether it be chemical waste that we didn't dispose of properly, whether it be people dumping oil into our storm sewers, that all goes untreated and into our streams. So, what we need to do is be able to intercept this water and at least treat it. And what we would like to do, the best, best of these facilities, is that they will remove the volume of runoff. And so, things like rain gardens are designed to intercept water, and they modify the soils and they put in native plants, which are very deep rooted, and that allows the water to at least soak into the ground, and hopefully, we're going to soak that in so much that we get rid of it. There's no discharge of stormwater. That's our best, that's our best BMP, structural BMP that you can have, but at least we want to slow it down and get it treated and then release it slowly back into the environment. So, we're going to have to have structural facilities for these storm events. Yes, sir?
Do you define how you're going to treat, like, I'm sure you're talking about stormwater detention basin, how you're going to treat that water from the discharge?
There's, we're going to be very flexible about how, how you do that. I have examples that I can show you, which some facilities can do it all-in-one. This can be done separately. It can be treated before you get into the stormwater detention basin, but we're going to be very flexible. And what we want to do is not, not constrict people, because every site's going to be different, and everyone's going to want to treat this differently. So, we have, I think, in our category of structural things, we have like five categories with maybe five or six BMPs in each category. So, you'll have a lot of choices. Plus, you'll be able to use BMPs from other municipalities and other agencies that have been approved for this. So, we're going to be as flexible as possible in how you do this.
Can you give us an example of what one of those would be?
If you're talking about, yes, in fact, my next slide, I'll show you.
Okay.
The second thing that we're going to do is essentially trade off that two-year, traditional two-year twenty-four hour detention, and we're going to trade that off for some channel protection extended detention. And really, the difference between that is that we're going to slowly release this water, this one-year storm event back into the streams, rather than the traditional two-year where we're just going to hold it for a very short period of time and release it back into the stream at the same rate before development. And these are the type of storm events that are carving our stream channels. These are the type of storm events that are moving our stream channels. These are the type of storm events that are actively eroding our chain, stream channels and creating our stream channels. So, we want to be able to manage these storms. So, in lieu of doing the two-year event, we're switching it for this, and then we would still keep the ten-year twenty-four hour traditional stormwater detention for those larger stormwater events. So, probably, most likely, the denser residential development and the commercial development will be requiring these, at least some sort of structural BMP in here. So, Mr. Hammond, here, here's one on the left for water quality, and this is a sand filter. So, this is not going to get rid of the stormwater. What's going to happen, and this is at one of our, I think, World Outdoor Emporium sites, they built a brand-new parking area, which you can see on the bottom right-hand corner, and they agreed to take all that water that's coming off that new parking area and drain it into this facility that you see on the left. Now, this is a sand filter. So, this is one of these strictly water quality facilities. It's not providing stormwater detention. And what it does is take that water off that new parking area, and it spreads that water off into there, and it drains down slowly through that gravel filter on top, and then there's a sand filter on the bottom, and there's actually drain tile under drain underneath. And so, that water slowly fills up that under drain, and it's, what you can't see is on the other end of that, going into the parking area, there's a little storm drain that lets the water out slowly. That travels across their parking area, and then the back left-hand corner there, there's a natural stream that it all drains into. So, this was a way of taking care of redevelopment on a commercial site. And the, the beauty of this and working with World Outdoor Emporium was, we weren't wasting space on their site, because all that stuff they've got on top is their product. So, that's a display area for their product. So, that's the kind of stuff that we're trying to integrate into all of this. So, that's why I can't answer your question with everything, Joe. We're going to allow things that are underground, we're going to allow things above ground. I mean, we're going to, wherever you can fit them in as best you can on your site.
And here's my fear, okay? I'll give you the example, you mentioned O'Fallon has adopted this. You guys might know his little, little bar and grill on Main Street called the Penalty Box in O'Fallon, it's right across from St. Joseph's, okay? He wanted to add a patio in the back of his bar, okay, his bar and grill, especially with COVID stuff. O'Fallon made him put about thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars and something similar to that, and now it's grown up in weeds and looks like hell. And it really, yes, the runoff there, it's not like an environmentally sensitive site next to a park or something like that. And, you know, growing up in this county, I mean, I understand you want to protect the creeks, but let's face it, now, the pictures you've gotten here is pretty accurate of a lot, most of our creeks. They're muddy, they got a lot of junk in them, that's just the way it is, okay? So, that's my concern, is it's going to, maybe it didn't cost him that much because he had the materials and he had a skid loader, but what about if it's a mom-and-pop business? And the difference between these new design standards and the old design standards is maybe he can't do it with a new design standard, he can't afford it. The question I'm going to have to you guys, how flexible are you going to be to that guy that can't swing that?
On redevelopment, we do have that flexibility built in there, so they can appeal that to us and we can, we can take that into consideration.
Appeal, appeal.
The other thing too, is we'll, we'll get to a slide where we, where we tell you when these are being required, but it's not going to be for every little site. It's going to have to be a site of some size. Generally, you're going to have a land disturbance of an acre or greater before these things start to kick in.
Is there a peel process to who?
To, I believe it's to me or to the Community Development Director. I'd have to look at the design criteria again.
And then if it doesn't, if they don't, if it doesn't seem to go their way, does it go to a variance committee?
I think what we'll, what we're, no, there's nothing like that in there. I mean, what we're going to be doing is looking at the constraints of the site and seeing whether that would be possible. I mean, we're going to, if they say they can't do it, we're going to try and make some suggestions of some, some things, simple things they can do, but we're not going to make them build something huge that won't fit on the site. I mean, that's not something that's going to happen.
You know, I, you just, we're talking about.
And these are redevelopments and retrofits. It's different on new development.
I get that, but Mike's aware of one, a development on Guthrie Road, okay? And that is kind of an environmental pretty area, okay? Large, large piece of ground in the county, all wooded, okay? They damn near clear-cut that whole piece of property, and there was enough, the only thing that there was was some, some, some detention bales and stuff like that. And then they did it in the county, because the county rules were slack, and then they annexed it all. Mike, did they not annex that ground in the St., in O'Fallon afterwards?
Talking about the Felderworth.
Decesed ground Felderworth down the Hancock Road area.
They are in the process of annexing it, but we did give them our tree preservation requirements, and they did meet those on their clearing.
But, but what's our, it's twenty-five percent, they can take seventy-five percent out, is that right?
I don't remember what that would have been.
Well, there's the, either or, but yeah, it's twenty-five percent.
Yeah. But, you know. But, you know-
Unfortunately, projects can put that out on the first rate. They can't clear out part of the middle, if they have the ability to do that.
So, the-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
A question about getting a variance. You, you can't get a variance.
No, it's-
But you can appeal-
Administrative-
Board of adjustments and question a interpretation by the-
I suppose if it's for a site plan, yes. If it's for subdivision, I'm not sure who would hear that.
Yeah, that's right.
Appeal.
Part of the planning process-
It's part of the planning process that goes through the P and Z.
Goes through P and Z. But if it's, if it's just a question of interpretation, you can appeal it to the board of adjustment, and still, like, for example, you can appeal it to Mr. Cronin. I think that's right.
Well, I'm, I'm back to what Mr. Cronin was asking. If it's a small business trying to do something and they're building a little ice cream stand or whatever the heck it is, and they got to put in some $100,000 underground water cleaning for, you know, cleaning system or whatever, it just would make it cost prohibitive to do the development. So, at what point do we, if the guy just proves a hardship that, well, the cost of this project's $150,000 total, all in, and this thing's $75,000, if to add this to the project, I can't do it, where's his, where's his way out? Where can he say, "I'm going to appeal this," or "I want to go to board of adjustments," or "I want to do something," because it creates a major hardship? I mean, that's what I'm saying, Steve, that there should be some kind of way where they have a way to appeal it with a hardship, if they can prove a hardship. Isn't there? I mean, don't we have that with everything else?
Don't have that with stormwater detention.
Well, if you're talking about a variance, right, Joe?
Yeah, variance or something, yeah, board of adjustments or whatever that would be.
Use variance?
That would have to, I mean, again, if it were, I suppose I could go to the planning and zoning commission for, for a variance through the subdivision process.
Then, go to board of adjustment for variance. So, why don't, why don't we have, why don't we have Marory look into that issue, give everybody an answer next week or so?
That's fine. It's an appeal, it's a variance process through subdivision ordinance, through planning and zoning commission, and council if it should go to council. It's, goes to board of the zoning adjustment is a decision of planning, zoning division, or community development director of the UDO.
And that wouldn't apply?
In this case, it would be more of a site.
So, the appeal would be, the appeal would be the P and Z?
Through the planning process. Site plan would go through P and Z.
I think we're talking about multiple hypotheticals. Why don't we summarize them in writing for our meeting?
We'll get an answer for it.
So, the structural practice on the right is going to be something more typical of channel protection, where now, we're taking this water. It's going to be similar to stormwater detention, only we're going to hold it back for a longer period of time and we're going to release it very slowly. So, this doesn't erode and start cutting new channels and, and taking our channels. The structures on the right would be similar things that you'd see for this type of thing. You're putting them through small openings. You're trying to submerge these openings so that they don't get clogged, because they are smaller, and we'll try to provide easier maintenance. And then, once you get those larger storm events, you're going to start detaining those traditionally with those larger openings. So, that would be something of a bit of a change from traditional stormwater detention.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Kind of following up on, on the earlier one. Is there, is there a threshold where this applies?
Yes.
I mean, is there, is there, you don't, you don't impose this on the first square foot.
No. We'll get to that slide.
You get to that.
Shortly.
But like you said earlier, that in the majority of these cases, you're talking about an acre or more of-
For the water quality standard.
Yeah. And that's for places that are currently built.
Correct.
Not for new developments. So, we're not talking about small little areas.
Yep.
Which I think gets back to what you and, Joe and Joe were talking about, and putting hardships on people who are just doing small expansions.
Yeah, so that patio behind the bar wouldn't-
Wouldn't, wouldn't qualify.
For redevelopment, we have much less strict standards and we have ability to weigh things.
Right.
Based on the site conditions and the site constraints. Because we realize it's already been developed and-
Well, when you say the ability, is it spelled out in the ordinance that what that criteria is, or is it going to be a decision?
The ordinance is going to refer you to the design criteria, and that's when it'll tell you what, when it's required. And, and we'll go through that. So, most of the stuff in the draft ordinance, like I said, it's either going to point you to the design criteria. A lot of this stuff is just cleanup of outdated item, items. Some of these things need to correct it, and the rest of it is, is to expand on the regulations for this additional stormwater management.
And furthermore, this is a large ordinance, but because the charter requires us to reproduce sections of the ordinance so that you understand the context of it, you'll see the first 60 pages are just reproducing definitions. So, there's very little actual amendment throughout this document, but we're required to provide it to you in the context that you thought of.
Is the amended portions in bold?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
So, the first section is on responsibilities. It's on page three, that you'll see the changes. Essentially, this is just cleanup, and it's assigning the responsibility for maintenance of the design criteria, the community development. The design criteria was established in 2002 under the County Highway Department. We have done some revision of it here and there, but it, it needs to be updated to basically clarify the responsibilities of the highway department, the community development department, and to bring things up to date. So, this would clarify that. Under definitions, page 23, we have defined design criteria so that we don't have to, every time we update the design criteria, we don't have to change all several different ordinance sections. So, that's basically the only reason we did that. And then, if you move to page 60 and 61, we essentially moved our definition of stormwater management facility from 420020 into this section. But we have been using that definition in our maintenance requirements for several years now.
Does that, when you say design criteria, does that mean that the design criteria can be changed by staff after the ordinance is passed?
Yes.
So, it's, it can be just made up however you guys see it should be done, right?
I don't think we would make any major changes like that.
No, no, but you could. According to this, you could just change it as you see fit.
Yes.
Is that because of what you said earlier, that all of these projects are different? So, they're going to have to be looked at as a case-by-case basis, just in case there are exceptions that are needed?
I'm not sure what you're-
Well, I think the design criteria guide, when we, prior to 2002, we followed a document from MSD, correct?
Correct. In St. Louis County.
In St. Louis County. And since 2002, when the highway department issued it, is that the binder you've got-
Yes.
Sitting next to you? It's a highly technical document made for an engineer to utilize. So, it's not a document that properly belongs in county ordinance. Some of it is pictures, it's calculations, it's the very nitty-gritty detail of, for instance, how do you build a street? So, the components of it have been updated on many occasions since 2002, not substantively in like large order, but it has been changed and updated since 2002.
Mostly reflect ordinance changes.
Yes.
Absolutely evolution of the industry.
Absolutely. But typically, we're not going to make any major changes without going through a process. Yes.
MSD's original standards were adopted, and they were a disaster. So, MSD has evolved. They continue to make those changes as industry and practice have proven out. As a result of that, it's been removed. So, this part of the ordinance allows staff to do that internally, without having to go back and reprint the entire document every time you want changes.
Sorry, this is Chuck Caverly, guys. He's one of our stakeholder group people that were here tonight. To move on, then, we are going to require these of site plans. So, under the site plan review section of the ordinance, which go to page 73 through 77, we are now requiring this new post-construction stormwater management for commercial sites per the design criteria. We're also modifying the section two for, that requires sediment erosion control performance guarantee agreements on site plan. Will allow those to be managed, the, the new structural requirements to be managed under that agreement, so we don't have to have a bunch of multiple agreements. Where, again, we're trying to make this easy for the applicant, the permutee. So, we will manage that all under the same performance guarantee. We are going to also require a recorded agreement, and we have been doing this. We've been preserving these for quite a while, either by people volunteering to do that or trade off for some minor stormwater detention. But we will require a recorded agreement for the long-term preservation of these facilities and to make sure that they're being properly maintained. And we do have a program under section 420 where we make sure that these are being maintained and we're enforcing that maintenance. And then, we will be requiring the approval, which we do now, but we are putting this into ordinance finally. We'll require the approval of as-built plans for the constructed facilities to make sure that they were built the way they were designed to. These are the revisions we're proposing in chapter 410, which is the subdivision regulations. So, if you look at 410-110, that's on page 86. And this basically is just replacing detention basin with stormwater management facilities. So, all of these need to be in common ground and shown on the preliminary plat. And 410-145, that's going to be on page 88, and then 91 through 92. We are basically correcting our tree preservation ordinance. It was referencing the wrong section for the director's waiver. If you had a site that was constrained, you couldn't do development on a site, and the, and the director could give you a waiver for eliminating the trees, there's a requirement for the replacement of those trees. So, basically, we're correcting that error. We're also allowing the signing of those areas to be more flexible for some of the developers' comments that we got. And 410-160, the improvement plans and installation, that's on 95 through 100. We're updating the titles of our design and construction specifications. Again, we require as-built plans now, but we are going to put that in the ordinance. We require as-built plans of these constructed facilities to determine that they were built the way they were approved as designed. And then, we're consolidating all the plan requirements for all developments in the design criteria. And we're basically moving one section into the design criteria that was for three-to-five acre developments. 410-210, that's going to be on page 102. And again, that's similar to the preliminary plat requirement, where now, we're just replacing stormwater detention basins with these stormwater management facilities. They need to be in common ground and shown on the final record plat. 410-220, that's going to be on 107. And we need to provide a way to maintain these in subdivisions. So, we're going to require that these maintenance standards are developed, recorded, and then they're referenced in the subdivision trust indentures. So, that the HOA can maintain these facilities. Yes, sir.
So, when these are being constructed, do you have the staff to go out and inspect them?
Yes, sir.
So, I, I don't understand, if we're inspecting them, why we need as-built drawings when they should be built according to the plans that were submitted?
The biggest thing is the volume of these, so we can check the volume of these. But we want to make sure that the, the openings were built at the right flow line elevation, they're the right size. Yeah, we're looking, we're not out there probably while they're constructing them. I don't have the staff to do all of that. Now, the highway department may be out there at that time, but-
It seems to me if the county-
Some of those things can't be done by eye. I can't tell what the flow line elevation is necessarily by eye, or definitely the volume of these facilities.
How are you going to know what the flow line is by going out there and looking at it later, without shooting gray?
Not going to. That's what we're asking for, these plans, so that we can-
I know, but if you get the plans, they don't always build them to plan. How are you going to know it's built to plan?
Because we're asking them for the plans after they're built. They need to survey them after they're built. And then, we looked at those and compared them to the design plans. To make sure that they're as big as they were and that they've got the size openings that they were supposed to have at the right elevation.
Some of us worked real hard on the minor subdivision ordinance changes because we want to promote five-acre lots.
These will not be included.
Well, let me just finish, okay? For what it's worth. And I, if you're really concerned about environmental concerns in this county, five-acre lots is where it's at, because you have a hell of a lot less destruction of the environment. But I'm reading on page 110, it says, "For all subdivisions with lots of one acre or more in size, open drainage swales along the streets may be allowed in lieu of curb and gutter, but the use of open drainage swales must be approved by the director of division of development review." Which means, you go in, the guy goes in with a five-acre subdivision, you guys tell him he needs curb and gutters. It says you can do that, okay? That screws that. That thing's done. It's, he's going to go-
We're not going to tell them that we don't have any requirements for five-acre developments. We, we, these won't be imposed on five-acre lot developments.
Then, why don't we, why don't we have that in the language, then?
That, that's in there already. All we did was move it from C to B. We just moved it, and then we added the new language.
The bottom line is this, and this is all fine and dandy, but it looks expensive. And if we start getting complaints from our constituents, or builders, or realtors, or whoever, and saying, "We can't do this anymore because this stuff costs too much," then we got a real problem.
This is actually helping them, because what this is saying is that if you have, if you're developing a lot size of one acre or greater, you don't have to build curb and gutter, because that's our standard. So, this is allowing them to do open drainage and-
If the director of division of development approve, approves.
Correct. Which we haven't approved, and actually, that used to be the highway department. But, yeah, we would, we would not disapprove. We're encouraging that sort of thing. In fact, we also have an open channel, non-structural credit in there too, that will help you reduce your, your structural. So, we're encouraging that type of design. And again, that, that ordinance wasn't, that's already in there. We just moved it from the different sec, we just rearranged those sections.
Rich, would it be, would it be easier to say you pay instead of-
Joe. Joe.
It wouldn't be easier to say, take it out and make it make-
I wouldn't have a problem with that. Just allow it.
I don't know what you're saying, but it is confusing.
And again, we weren't proposing to change that. We just moved it from one place to another. But, yeah, absolutely. I don't have a problem with that. Let's see.
So, when I look at this contact, can you read me with a word?
Sure. Yeah, 410-210. That, again, we're just, that's going to be a requirement on the final plat to show I think we talked about 410-220. Again, we need to preserve these, and we need to require maintenance for them. So, that'll be a requirement on the subdivision trust indentures and the HOA. I think we were able to work out some language with the HBA that would address their concerns. 410, 410, that is on page 109 through 111.
Is there, Richard, is there anything else in here that's, that we need to know before?
Now, let me move on to the design criteria, so I can answer some of your questions. Again, that, that was the one we were just discussing. 410-440, again, we're going to require construction inspection of these. 410-460, and 440's on 112, and the next one's on 113. And we'll require private maintenance of these by the HOA. We also modified section 412, our erosion control ordinance, on 116 and 117, to again, allow the, allow the performance guarantees for these facilities on commercial sites to be put in the sediment erosion control performance guarantee instead of requiring a whole new process for these. And then, in 420020, again, we have, we've probably constructed close to 80 of these facilities in the county now, just over the years. facilities in the county now, just over the years. Some development wanted themselves. They want their facilities to have this, they want them to be more self-sustainable. We've traded off some minor stormwater detention for this type of stuff. So we've been working on this for a while, even though we haven't had a requirement for it. But we had anticipating the need for this. And years ago, we did put in place in 420, an ordinance that requires the maintenance of stormwater facilities and stormwater detention facilities. And we do inspect these periodically, the county does. So we are making sure these are being maintained. We are not changing anything in this part of the ordinance, other than moving the definition of stormwater management facility into the definition section in 405. And there was a mistake in some of the wording for stormwater. It said stormwater detention facility instead of management facility, so we're cleaning that up there.
I tell you, the part that really gets me is why the county's even doing this, because the cities are all densely populated and they, you know, I see where the need is when you have a city, like the cities are now, it's dense and as much traffic as that travels through their towns. But I can't understand why the county's doing it, since most of our areas, if not all of them, aren't very densely populated.
I agree with that. I don't know why we're doing it either. I'd like to know how much it's adding to, like I say, a 250,000 in our house. What kind of cost are we adding for young families by doing this? Can somebody, HBA or Brad, can anybody answer that question? No? Do you guys know?
I can't answer that question.
I can tell you, in Winston Development, not by Winston, I think there's seven BMPs that are being put in there, and it's costing the developer about $850,000.
Extra?
To meet those stormwater requirements for the basin.
So who's paying for that? Is the young people buying houses?
We're not expecting that kind of thing here.
I mean, that's a huge development.
Well, so did...
That's Wensville. It's already in place in Wensville.
I think this can be done. I mean, I'm not saying this isn't going to cost a little bit more money, but I think this can be done for a little bit more cost, because I think you can combine this stuff all into one facility. You're not going to be able to do that on every site, but, and I'm not saying it's not going to cost more, but part of the reason why we're doing this is we're going to ultimately be required to do that, or we're going to have to face regulation from the state. We are an MS4, regulated MS4, just like Wensville, just like O'Fallon. We do have this need, and our density, I mean, we still have dense developments going on in the county. It's not as much as it used to be. We're more on the outskirts of the Golden Triangle now, but we still have development going on within the Golden Triangle.
But even in those developments, okay? In the 10 years I've been on the council, we've had one problem, and it was only dense development in my district, which is Jackson Estates. And it's an environmentally sensitive area, it's light along Big Creek, right near County Park, okay? And you were out there with me, you handled that well under the old regulations, okay? That's why I'm questioning why we need a bunch of new regulations, and especially, I represent that growing area of Wensville, where he's referring to that $850,000 worth of detention. When you add those things on to the cost of development, then those young couples, in a lot of instances, are schoolteachers, or firefighters, or cops, or whatever, they can't afford to buy a house anymore out there. That's what I'm worried about. And you go to Lincoln County or Warren County, you ain't got to deal with any of this crap.
So again, our emphasis is, again, our emphasis is on these non-structural BMPs. The more that you can use those on your site, the less structural you're going to have, the less cost you're going to have, the less size you're going to have of these structural. So we're really, we're trying to provide as much flexibility as we can into this ordinance, and we're trying to provide you as much credit from having to do these structural things as we possibly can. And I can't imagine another community in this area that's gone to the extent that we have to do that in this ordinance.
Well, I know that this, that I was the one that sponsored that stream protection ordinance, and the HBA gave me tons of pushback back in the early 2000s. John, I don't know if John was on it, but, and we were the first ones in the state to do it, but what you're saying, Richard, is if they don't do this, then they got to do that, or they get credits for this. And by the streambank protection, which I think it's a great ordinance, I'm glad it's in place, but they're going to either have to do this system, or else make their streambank take up more ground, and undisturbed tree banks to get the credits. And so theirs are going to be adding costs there, because they're using 30, 40,000 dollars an acre, whatever ground is, out wherever they're developing. And so it seems to me, it's just a lot of unnecessary regulations and a lot of unnecessary cost. Sometimes it's hard enough to get projects through the county, so why would we make it any harder for people?
Again, the bottom line is that this is coming from MDNR as well.
They can sue us if they have to. I mean, if you're saying, "We're going to start doing whatever the state and federal government tells us," that's called unfunded mandates, and I don't think they, can they really make us do that? I mean, it's unfunded mandates, there's laws on that kind of stuff. They can't be telling us to do stuff unless they're going to pay for it. And I don't know why the hell we want to, I don't know. To me, this seems like a lot more regulations, a lot more rules, a lot more stuff. The HBA, what's their opinion? What's, Brad, are you here to represent any...
Emily is.
Emily, are you, what's...
Well, I'll say that when we...
Come on up.
That be okay?
The one thing that I will say is that when we reviewed the draft ordinance and compared it to a lot of the ordinances that are on the books in the various municipalities, St. Charles County's is much more reasonable than O'Fallon, than Wensville, than...
So we're going to make it unreasonable by being similar to them, is what you're saying?
No, no, and what I'm saying is, is that what they're proposing to do is much more reasonable than what we see in some of the western municipalities in the county.
That's not really what I answered. I mean, are you trying to be, you're trying to probably be politically correct in that, but I mean, what kind of cost is this going to add? Is this something, are you guys saying you're going to welcome it only because you're going to, it's better than, it could be worse, or is it...
Well, it could be a lot worse, certainly.
Okay, that's, I understand.
And as, I mean, and I can't answer your question on the cost. I'm not a builder or an engineer, but...
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, that one of the reasons that you, that we're looking at this is because the other municipalities have done it, and that we're trying to fall in line with what they're doing, and yet not be more restrictive than they are. Is that correct?
Well, I think you have, I think you're looking at it because Missouri DNR, because you're an MS4, you have to, right? You need to update your regulations. And so I think that's why you're looking at it. And of course, you know, from the HBA's perspective, if changes need to be made, we'd like them to still offer flexibility to developers and builders, and, you know, try to, the requirements that will be in place, hopefully they can be achieved in a more cost-effective manner. Does that kind of answer your question?
I got one.
Yes, Mr. Grobe, go ahead.
I've been talking to the St. Charles County Board of Realtors, okay, about this, and they've told me that you've been talking to the county staff about it, okay?
Yes, we have.
And they said that you had some small asks that you got, but there was one big ask that you did not get. I'd like to know what that big ask is.
Oh, I would say that the one ask that we made that wasn't incorporated into the ordinance has to do with flood protection and channel protection for three to five acre lots. And I will try to explain this in lay terms, because, again, I'm not a builder or an engineer. But I think what we requested is that the county consider putting in the ordinance that water quality requirements be considered on a per lot basis. So if you have a really large piece of ground, and it's going to be divided up in three to five acre lots, the type of product that might be built on each lot is really going to vary. Somebody may come in and put in, you know, a 3,000 square foot home and several outbuildings. Someone may just come in and put in a 2,400 square foot home and leave a lot of, you know, a lot of natural landscape there as well. So we suggested perhaps that the county consider handling that through the building permit process rather than ahead of time, so that depending on what you were proposing to build, then your water quality requirements would be, you know, determined based on what you're going to put on the lot, as opposed to looking at the development as a whole, and then trying to determine what type of detention retention type facilities you should put in instead.
I think that's a more logical approach, too, because a lot of people in those five acre lots don't want to sell them all at one time, don't want to develop the whole subdivision. They want to sell 20 acres this year, and 20 acres next year, or whatever, and they don't want to put the whole piece of ground under a subdivision at one time. So I think that approach that you're talking about is more logical, and I wish you would send that to us a little bit clearer. What you've said.
I could, certainly if you'd like me to, I could send you some.
We have the HBA's comments in writing, we'll be happy to share with them. Like we said at the beginning, that we, this is the one policy area that we disagree on, so we're going to bring you forward the recommendation from staff. And yeah, it absolutely should be an area that you all are going to want to talk about, because it's an area that differs. Cities don't have three and five acre lot developments in St. Charles County. So we're going to have some new topics to discuss, and that really is the major outstanding point.
But as an example, Mr. Dubre, who came before this board for three acre development, we did the minor subdivision tract, he withdrew it, says he's going to do it five acres. He doesn't intend to take his 200-plus acres outside of Wensville and do it in one big subdivision. He wants to sell five acres this year, maybe 10, 20 acres this year, maybe 10, 20 acres this year. So having him have to do detention for an entire 200 acres would be too big a ask for him. If you let him do it per lot like she's suggesting, that's something that's more reasonable that he could do with a building permit.
Yeah, and Rich, like I said, Rich has got some thoughts about how that approach should be handled, so we'd like an opportunity to share that with you as well, before you all make a decision about how you want to handle it.
And again, the five acre lots will not be regulated by this, so it'll be the three to five that we're working on.
And I don't even know why we're regulating those. I, before I'd support this, I'd want three and five acre lots excluded from this ordinance, period, or I'm not going to support it.
I agree with that, sir.
I guess my one thought there is I've seen three to five acre lots be developed where they just put a road in and simply nothing more with open drainage. And I think those are ones that we probably don't need to worry a whole lot about, but I've seen three to five acre lots come in where they've created the whole thing, they put in storm sewers in the rear yards and along the roads, and they're dumping that water into a stream. And I don't see how that's any different than a more dense development. We're not cleaning that water up, we're moving it quickly into a stream. So I think that's where we want to have the ability to regulate something like that.
Yeah, but what's, but what's in the water from the three acres, other than rain water? What else?
You've got road runoff and pavement runoff, for the most part.
For what it's worth, there's a 100 acre, three acre development going in across the street from my house. It used to be a cow pasture, okay? Now it's a three acre development with subdivision streets. The runoff's a hell of a lot cleaner from that subdivision than it was if it was a cow pasture.
It may be, but if they developed it with curb and gutter like a traditional subdivision, and we've seen that in some of these, then that's not what you're going to get.
I got a question, Mr. Gross.
And it's rare, but it happens.
Would any, do you have any input on the cost, or may added cost to subdivisions, or problems you may see, or what?
Yeah, the cost question really depends upon how it's regulated, and how strict they are and what they're requiring. So you could ask them to give you some examples and push some numbers, and to that end, I have a question about the credit. I worked with Wensville to create a credit system, I don't know, it was in the late 90s, early 2000s. We thought it was brilliant, right? Nobody ever used it, because it really didn't give sufficient credit for the cost that was going to be associated with it. And that was in the context of, I think, lot sizes or something. So one of my questions about the credit is, do we know if, in fact, that it'll be used? And I don't know if you pushed any numbers to make, figure that out or not, but I encourage you to do it, because I know I failed when I tried to do this in another context. So I am unclear on the covenant as to which covenant, whether it's something just in the indenture, if you have flexibility on it. I can tell you that some of the municipalities that I have seen have some covenants that are very broad, and I think legally have a lot of problems, and it'll be interesting to see how they're challenged in the future. So I'm curious about that, because I've seen this kind of, the covenant thing come up in several different contexts, and as Rich has talked about this. And I don't understand how this interacts with 420.020, and I'm sure Rich can explain that, because you're not changing that, but you're adding some other things to this, as Rich is trying to address some stormwater requirements. So I don't understand that interaction as well. And the last thing is putting all of your stormwater management facilities into common ground is a mistake. There are times when it is inappropriate to do that. Wind Castle is one of them. I had to create common ground in the county in the back of these yards, nobody could get to it, it was silly. But I did it because it was required. It would have made sense simply to have a restriction, not call it common ground, and create some kind of easement if people needed to get to it, because you ended up with some goofy common ground strips. I don't know how this is going to work. If you call it stormwater management facilities, is that going to include every rain garden? Is that going to include every channel? Depending on how that is interpreted over time, you may get some unintended consequences. So those are just some comments I have. I mean, obviously, a lot of work's gone into this, and, you know, staff's worked hard on it, so.
So as far as the common ground element, there is a clause in there that allows the community development director to allow these to be put in easements or to weight the common ground requirement. Where it's...
Want to continue? Wrap it up here?
Where it's appropriate. So a lot of this stuff is going to be found in our design criteria. As Jennifer said, it's a highly technical document, I don't want to get into that. It tells you how to safely design streets, drain streets, so we don't have flood events on streets, things like that. And these are guidelines for achieving our ordinance standards and development and approval of site development plans. As Jennifer said, we previously used St. Louis County as an MSD, as most of the places around here have, but we have now developed our own.
And what Rich means is, we will not get in that today, but if anybody wants to nerd out on the design criteria document and meet with Rich, you're more than welcome to do so, but we will pass on that for this reason.
If you're interested in falling asleep. The first of the new section 70, we moved our stormwater detention requirements from section 50 and created a new section 70, which also included these water quality requirements. So the first section in there is the purpose, it's establishing the purpose and the goals that we came up with for all of this. So again, we're going to try to be flexible, we're going to be allowing designs from other municipalities that have been approved by other municipalities, agencies. However, they need to meet the purpose and goals for our stormwater management in order to be able to be used here. And section 7010 is the meat of it, the design criteria, there's our real standards. And so we are now creating standards for water quality. We're trading off that stormwater, two-year stormwater detention for the channel protection, and we're leaving our flood protection the same. So in 7010, one required, all of these, except for five acre or greater lots, all of these will require water quality volume protection when you hit that threshold of one acre of land disturbance. And then you start requiring the stormwater detention, as we do now, when we hit a differential runoff. So when you have enough impervious area on your site that you're causing a greater, a rate of runoff greater than it was before development of two cubic feet per second, that gets you into the requirement to provide stormwater detention. So that wasn't any different than what we've done before. It's the same requirement, we're just requiring a little bit kind of detention, a little bit different kind of detention for that smaller storm event.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We do have those other topics that we really want to discuss, too.
I understand, yeah.
I'll try and quickly get through the rest of this. So 71020 is how you design these and the sizes that they need to be. 710.3, again, we need as-built plans to show that they built these per design. And 7020, that's the requirements for how these have to be preserved, and you have to provide perpetual maintenance for these facilities. And 7030 are our actual design guidelines, and here's, we're going to allow the flexibility to use other design guidelines from other agencies. This is where we spell out our credits for all of our non-structural best management practices, and this is where we outline all of the acceptable urban structural BMPs that we're going to allow. And then in 7040, these will be actually BMP design guidelines that the county's going to use, that anyone can use to do their design with, and these should be able to meet our standards just by the use of these. However, if you want to use other design guidelines from other agencies, we will be flexible in allowing you to do that, provided they meet the purpose and goals under section And so our next steps would be to introduce an ordinance to you. We were hoping to do that next month. We need to publish the updated design criteria once we get done with our discussions with our stakeholder group and this process and the HBA. And hopefully that will be done before the end of the year, and we'll have it ready by January. will be done before the end of the year, and we'll have it ready by January. And then we need to provide training and workshops for the development community and for our staff to, to let them know how we're going to introduce and regulate these new regulations.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions? Mr. White? Just one fast question. Is there anything in this that'll help eliminate the problem that we've had in the past where we have one subdivision that has a detention pond and another subdivision that's using it and, and the subdivision that it's in, how to pay for all?
All I can say, John, is moving forward, hopefully we won't allow that situation to happen again. And that is one thing we do try to do. We try to, I mean, we try to be reasonable. We try to partner with these people. We try to give them ideas on how it can, how we can do this with, with the least amount of impact to your site development. And that oftentimes involves, like it, like, like they did with the World Outdoor Emporium, using an area that they can, they can best use to, to, to display their product or, you know, an area that's going to be beneficial to them, not just a waste of their space.
Right. Okay. Good deal.
And it's an amenity. We don't want it to be a nuisance.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate all the work and effort. I mean, I can't imagine how much goes into trying to, you know, take a look at all these different things and come up with what, you know, what you feel are good solutions. So moving on, our second topic here is a discussion related to barns, garages, and minor subdivisions in agricultural and zoned areas. And I believe, Mr. Cronin or Mr. Brazel, I believe that...
Well, the first, the first thing I wanted to talk to Mike or Jared about is, and I think we cleared up one, but if the county is going out to agriculture areas and inspecting agricultural barns that are, they could be dilapidated, it doesn't matter, it'd be on 100 acres, whatever, and you guys are writing them up and condemning them. Are we starting that again?
Yeah.
So what we're doing is we're going out and we're following the ordinance. And the ordinance says that if we have a dilapidated building that is not used for agricultural purposes, that we have the ability to address it. Typically, the only time that we've done it, for example, an old colony in your district, we got a complaint from the neighbor who was trying to sell their house. Their building was falling apart in front of their house and blowing into their property. We went out and we wrote them up and had them repair their building. We are not actively going out and searching out for every barn and every old farm structure out there. Typically, these are done by complaint. But I would reiterate that we're following the ordinance as it relates to those.
You know, usually it's neighbors in a fight with each other, and it's just, it's a big problem. You know, I mean, if it's, if it's not, if it's in the middle of a farm, it's really nobody's business if it's falling apart. And that's what we addressed this years ago. But the one I, when I reached out to you guys, it was the one more numely, but then we cleared that one up because I got a complaint on you guys. But then I, that was, I understand that one now. But that was my question. It's just, that was a very minor part of this. I want to talk about subdivision thing more, but just so we're not, just so we're not doing that. I mean, the way I understand, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
We are doing that.
Yeah.
In floodplain areas, I can tell you. And I give you an example. That first picture is a barn that you guys found by aerial survey because it's a mile off a county road behind a lock gate. Okay? I, when I knew the, I knew of the barn, I used to live in this property years ago, and you can see the water came up in it. It's got a concrete foundation, got a bunch of mud in it. That's the structural, if you, part of it. It's a good old barn.
That's a beautiful barn.
Well, do the next page. I'll show you a whole bunch more of my district. That's, that's the barn from a different angle that we just saw. And the owner, don't, 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 go too fast. Stay on that one. The owner of this one's a relatively wealthy man that owns a lot of the duck club property. His caretaker asked me, he said, we really don't want to tear that down, but the county says we, it has to either be fixed or tore down. I talked to Mike about it. Mike said they found that by an aerial survey. So, and long and short of it is, when I, there was some kind of confusion, the actual owner's representative of his company had already contracted to have it tore down. So that barn's getting tore down. If you go to the next slide.
One sec.
Can I finish real quick, please?
Okay. Well, I want to clarify the statement.
Well, that's what's happened, okay?
Well, we didn't find it by aerial. We're doing our flood damage assessments. And what the aerial part of it was, we couldn't get on the property. So when, which we had a number of properties like that. So what we do is an aerial assessment using the vid, the...
And those folks at those duck clubs ain't very happy about that.
Well, sure. But, but we're required by our FEMA requirements to do a damage assessment.
But Mike, if there's, if it's not insured, it's not required. You don't have to, you don't have to, FEMA has no...
We don't know that until we do the damage assessment.
But FEMA has no control over these barns that have been paid off over 100 years. It only, the bank requires flood insurance if it's under loan. That's the only time they require insurance.
Can I, can I finish real quick? Just go further. I won't tell you where that one's at because that's a real pretty old barn, but that got flooded too this year. Okay? So, all right, and that's in the floodplain as well. If you go to the next one, this I think was important because we're going to talk about pole barns, too. This is a modern pole barn, and a lot of people take a lot of time to make, dress them up and make them look real nice in my district. Okay? This guy's a well-respected farmer in my district. Some of the people in this room know him. If you go to the next slide, okay, that's his barn. That's a barn his probably great-great-grandpappy built a long time ago. Okay? And the same way, if you look right next to it, you'll see a new home built next to it. These little barns like this are important in my district because they, a lot of them have history. That family, that's probably 150-year-old barn that was built by one of the German settlers of our region. You'll go to the next one. This barn came before the county council, okay, because we had to change some rules because originally they told the guy that lived on the property, he could not build that barn because he already had a different barn. If you look at that barn, they put the barn quilt on the side. They've got decorations out front. I mean, some of these barns have kitchens in them. A few of them have a bar in them. If you go to the next one, he had this barn on the same property, and the county originally told him, you got to tear that barn down if you want to build that new barn. We went and changed the ordinance a few years back ago, and so he could build his new barn and keep his old barn because it's kind of a cool old historic barn. You go to the next slide, okay, that's another pole barn in my area. And if you look at that, they tried to make it like, look like an old-fashioned barn. You'll see a lot of decorations out in front. You go to one more. I think there might be up, I mean, that's it. The, the long and short of it, I think, as much money as we try to preserve history in this county, these regulations are resulting in some of these old barns getting tore down. And I think that's unfortunate. Okay? If you got a complaint, I get it. Okay? But that barn is a mile away from a county road. Okay? And, and, you know, it's going to get tore down, and it's a shame. But, you know, they did, at the time, they were told they had to fix it or tear it down. Okay?
Can you put up my slides? My, turn my computer on. This is that same barn that you're showing us right now. So what we do when we do these FEMA damage assessments is we go out and we look at these structures that were affected by flooding because we're looking at hazardous conditions. We're looking at electrical...
But hazardous to who?
To the occupants.
But if they...
There's no occupant.
It's on their property. You have no business going in there and telling them how hazardous it is.
There ain't a person lives within a mile of that barn. Okay? And the electric's all unhooked. And what you see in there is, there's a little workshop building and some dog kennels at the end.
I understand that. We're following the policy that we've always followed, as far as I know, related to doing damage assessments. So we assessed this, and we said, hey, we don't know what's there. We need to do an inspection. We weren't allowed to be on the property, so we did it as best we could based on the aerials and the pictures that we had. After we sent them that notice, they expressed concern. What are you telling us we need to do with this barn? And we said, hey, we need to come out and we need to take a look at this. They had us out. We looked at it. We realized it's an agricultural building, that it is, got some damage, but it can be repaired, and that was right-sized. They elected to demolish that building. That was not something that we forced them to do. They elected to demolish that. The other barns that you're showing, we're not going out actively looking for barns.
They didn't, they didn't, just to clarify this, they didn't have an option of leaving the barn alone. They had an option of either fixing it or tearing it down.
No, I have email where we told them that they could keep the barn. They selected to demolish that. Now, maybe they made that decision and entered into a contract early on, but we expressed to their attorney multiple times, are you sure this is the direction you're going? And she said, we're already on, under contract to demolish that.
Well, that's what I heard, too. But I heard when they went down to talk to y'all, you guys said you either had to be fixed, or actually, what I think was told, it had to be demolished. And then we got, went out and took the pictures and said that, oh, maybe it can be fixed. But they did not have the option. No, no one ever clearly told them that they could just let that barn stand.
Well, we can send you emails where we clarify.
I did. I looked at it.
I think the thing that we need to clarify this is, obviously, it's confusing to you guys. Okay? So I know Mr. Cronin will agree with me. I don't know with so many other folks, but the county, I think we need to make the legislation absolutely clear that if you have agricultural barn on agricultural property, it should, it's no one's business what it looks like. I mean, they're 100-year, 200-year old barns. That lady over in here, those old people they're trying, they're harassing. I mean, it just goes on and on. And so I don't, I don't care how bad it looks. That's down on Highway F, right? There's nothing wrong with that. It's Dearburg's barn. If he wants to tear it down, let him tear it down. I mean, it's on his farm. If somebody's in that barn, they're trespassing. And that's violation of the law. So we went through this before, Jared, and this, this was four or five years ago before you were here. And if we need to get 300 farmers in here, we can do it, and they'll do it. And they don't want to go through this again. And this is not right. This is wrong. And this is not, you know, we're not going to go around and tell people to tear their barns down because that's part of history right there. That barn's 200 years old. It was built by the Daniel Boone, the Daniel Boone heritage, Jared, is part of their farm. So we're not going around doing this.
Councilmember Brazel, I can tell you for, I'm 100% sure, you're not going to go out and find 300 farmers that have suffered.
Yeah, but you got that picture up there for a reason.
I can with my help.
Because you think there's something wrong with that barn. There is nothing wrong with that barn. That's a pretty old barn.
We have not written it up. We have not done anything about it. But these are the ones that I think that are on the fringe right next to the right way.
That is none of your business. That is none of your business. That's on a farm. That's on, that guy's got 800 acres. I mean, why are you going up on his farm and telling him his barn's unsafe? It's no one's business to go on that.
We haven't. That's the point I'm making.
That's insane. If you guys think that, that's insane.
I agree.
The point I'm making is that we have not gotten out and written this up. You drive by every single day.
But you got the picture because you just said it's on the fringe. You think that's unsafe. It's none of your business if that's unsafe.
No. The point that I'm trying to make is you're, you're stating that these barns are in the middle of farms and so on and so forth. This is right on the highway. This is something...
It's on Highway F, Jared. It's on Highway F on that curve, and it's off on the side. But still, it's, there's a side over there. There's other barns there. There's a conglomerate barns. That's his property. It's no one's business but his. If somebody goes in that barn, they're trespassing. Okay? So I don't, I don't see, that's the first violation of law. They're trespassing. Somebody's on someone's property. And so I remember one time someone from staff said, well, a trespasser could get hurt. Well, a trespasser could get hurt when he gets shot in the ass with a shotgun. So trespassing, that's how he's going to get hurt. You know? I mean, this is crazy.
Mr. County Executive.
Yeah, yeah. A little history here. We, we went through, I think it was six, six, eight years ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago.
2015.
Six, eight years ago, we went through this. The, the issue was, the issue was agricultural exemption. And I think the way it's, I think the way y'all wrote it, and you can certainly change it if you don't like it, but the way it was written then, basically, it's not, it's not because it's in an agricultural district. It's because it's an agricultural use. And then the question was, well, what if it's not really being used anymore? And remember, we referenced what the assessor had done. If the assessor was still charging them as an agricultural property, you're right, it's exempt. We're, we're out of there. We don't have anything to do with it. But if, if a, if a property isn't being assessed for agricultural purposes anymore, in other words, it's kind of abandoned, and then it's a, it's a hazard, the way it's written right now, if we get a complaint, we're going to go out there and we may tell them, yeah, you need to, need to, you know, make this structurally sound or tear it down. Now, again, I think that's, and Mike, that's not the way it's written, tell me. But that's the way I remember it. And again, if you don't, if you know, if you just want us to stay away from all barns and everything, and you got, you know, four of you want to do that, that's fine. But I think that's what the statutes or the ordinance says right now.
Well, I'm willing to revisit it because I will perfectly make it clear for you guys what my intent is, whether or not I got agreement from the council. I will definitely make that amendment so you guys aren't confused on, on my perspective.
I believe Mike has the wording.
Yeah, Mr. Harper.
So the ordinance from like 2015, in this discussion, which predates Jared and both I, but the such active agricultural use of land as determined by the St. Charles County Assessor, regulated by the State Tax Commission, promulgate a pursuant to them. So that's, we're following the ordinance as it's currently written.
What's the number of that ordinance?
15-097. I had it on my desktop because I had decided quite a bit early on there.
Well, Mike, if you guys, if you're following the legislation, then clearly I, I, it's not written to my intent.
Right. That's what it sounds like.
The council will agree with me on that because like Steve said, we went through this. It was a, you guys weren't here.
We weren't here, but we heard all about it.
Joe, if you remember, if you remember, the issue, you know, issue was an agricultural exemption. But what if it's a farmhouse? I mean, is a farmhouse exempt because a farmer lives in it? And I think everybody agreed, no, you still have to maintain your farmhouse just the way all of you and me have to maintain my house. So it was, it was the agricultural use which was the, was, was the key here. And again, if you want to make it stricter, that's, you know, have that...
Point of order, though, you said if it was deemed assessed agricultural. That's what you read out of the ordinance, correct?
We just got to change it.
I can tell you that ground and all the ground that I showed, showed you pretty well was probably all assessed agriculturally.
It's the word active use as well.
Then you need to tell Dearburg to put two sacks of beef corn on. It's actively used.
Yeah. I mean, and that, that's kind of what we've run into is the, the ones that are being flagged are not being, are not an active use.
Ten years, and that never bothered me. My dogs have stuck in their, their loss routine days in one of them barns, but I didn't complain about it.
Mr. Chairman.
But that's why we didn't, that's why we, you know, active, agricultural use, again, how are we going to know, especially if we can't go in and see? That's why, if I remember, you know, we all decided to go ahead, well, as long as they're paying taxes on it as an agricultural use, we're not going to question it. It's agricultural. If they abandon it and aren't paying taxes on it anymore, that's a deal.
Mr. Eel.
May I make a suggestion that, obviously, we have a wording issue. May I make a suggestion that the council folks from one, two, and seven, I'm sorry, one, two, and six, not meaning to put you in that, John, because you guys, as you point out on a regular basis since I've been here in 2013, own most of the unincorporated land in the county, can I suggest that...
Wish we owned it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your area, the, the area that you serve, that you're voted to represent is that area. Can I suggest that you folks have a meeting and discuss the wording on this to an area that everybody can be satisfied with?
Absolutely.
And we don't run into that?
Yeah. And can I just say, I think we ought to look at the aspect of historical barns, too. So to me, there's a difference between, you know, something that was built shabbily 20 years ago and it got flooded or is falling down to something that was, you know, been around for 100 years or whatever.
To Joe's pictures.
Yeah, I think that might be a special category because those are not going to be maintained perfectly.
Right.
And we could tie into the same discussion. There's proposing changes to construction standards for pole barns. I don't think we have a problem now. Okay? But the standards that they're proposing, I've got some issues with, and that's kind of tied in together, old barns and new barns. So.
That's a, that, that, is that on the agenda, too? Because there's no way, these are, these are very important topics, I know, to me and Mr. Cronin and probably Nancy. And I don't know if we got time to talk about that Kentucky thing you guys are trying to do. Because I also want to talk about the five acre subdivision because we wanted, we want to work that out for quite some time. But I'm, I'm...
Well, I, I think at this point, I think, I think it's a good suggestion what Mike made.
No, I agree with that. We'll do that. We'll work that out. We can work that out.
Well, you may be able to do a two-for-one in that discussion. While you're discussing this wording, you can discuss the pole barn wording that you have in there and the concerns that you have.
I do think, though, that the construction issue is very, very separate and different from the conversation on the historic barns and how we handle agriculturally deemed property. Whether we want to talk about it this evening or at the next work session, we're prepared to talk about pole barn construction if you'd like to do that.
Well, that's not on the agenda, really.
Well, I think I just said barns and garages, so.
I do want to talk about the five acre subdivision thing because that's what, I think that's why Mr. Cronin's here, too, because he's got a customer.
I, I just, real quickly, I sent you comments on the, on the Kentucky standard. I read it. To my knowledge, nobody built one like that in this county. I've never built one like that.
He just built a brand new when I was at his place over the weekend. Did you, did you dig the whole four foot around and put that much concrete in the bottom? No, I put the dome in there and poured concrete.
I think, so, real quickly on that, this is, we're trying to kind of meet in the middle on this.
Yeah.
Because we don't have that, the prescribed design currently under the code. So we, it requires an engineered plan. And that is way more owners, I, we believe, on, on an applicant trying to do it. So we're trying to kind of meet in the middle.
Like Kentucky's, but adapted to our construction techniques. That's what I'd like to see.
That's one of our goals. This whole Kentucky thing was a stopgap measure because right now, we've reached out to all of the different engineers that have submitted plans in the past, and we're trying to get them to actually consult on this and help us develop something that is for St. Charles County.
Just in your support, Jared, I looked at the standards, and I thought they were pretty good myself. It actually... good myself, it actually gives people direction on how to, how to do it correctly.
It's kinda the Wild West right now. You know, we get some plans that are drawn that are in very good shape, that we think would be great, and then we have other ones that are on the back of a napkin, and those people are going irate because we won't approve them, and then they say, well, can't you tell me what I need to do? And it's like, no, I'm not here to design this, we have nothing prescribed.
But I, I think Mr. Cronin just had some points on the piers being forty-eight inches, that's crazy, we don't do forty-eight inches on piers, not, not, aren't even commercial. And then going with a pin at the bottom, we don't do that, not for barns. And the way what we do typically with eighteen or twenty-four-inch piers, with the domino on the bottom and some concrete in it, that's working, we don't have problems with our barns around here. And so those are, I think, I think there's some room to, I think, I understand you're trying to create a format, here's the format, but I think we need to come together a little bit on some of the design criteria, because I have built a lot of pole barns.
Jennifer.
I think what, I think what Jared's still trying to get across is, right now, if we do nothing, if Jared does nothing, you have to continue to submit engineered plans. He's trying to give you and give the community a document that they can go by as a standard that hopefully could cut out some level of engineering work for people while he identifies a better construction standard with the people appropriate here in St. Charles County. So I think our desire would be to go forward, allowing, well, he's, as the building official can do this on his own, to go forward with putting that standard in place, which will hopefully resolve some issue, and we'll need to continue to work forward to solving something that is more desirable for you all.
I'm not good with that, okay?
Okay, and in the meantime, we'll continue to need to have all plans submitted by an engineer.
They don't, they don't do that, Jennifer, we don't do that, we do not do that, and that's not the ordinance, we're not doing engineered barns, we haven't been doing that, it's completely inconsistent, and that's not what we're doing.
Sorry, Jared, did I misspeak on that?
No, I think you are consistent in the, or you are correct.
You do engineer some trusses, but that's it.
We have had submittals that are all over the board. We've had some rules of thumb in the past that have been somewhat consistent, and like I said, when we've had good pole barn designers, the people that do this for a living and they submit it, we have accepted those designs because it's always been done that way. What happens is that ends up biting us because we have these connections and so forth that are required in there, or uplift protection, and we're not meeting that. But then we have the other half of people that are submitting that have never built a pole barn before, and it's a disaster. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to be consistent.
I agree, I mean, I agree with your perspective, and it's probably a good idea, but we just gotta, I mean, we can either support it and work together or not support it.
Yeah, I, my, my whole plan is, we gotta put something that's a stopgap together, we've gotta figure out what we want to do, and then we should codify it, bring it to council, you guys should, should codify this into the code at some point.
Okay, thank you, Jared.
All right. Now, and we have approximately twelve minutes, and I don't know if that's enough time for the five-acre lot discussion, but at least we can, we can.
Well, I know Mr. Cronin, and, and I know Mr. Gall is here for that reason too, because you, you have a customer or client or something that were having some difficulties in a five-acre lot or, and so what the idea was, I guess, Mike, is, is what our idea was, and Mr. Cronin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the idea was to get people to go to five-acre lots, and Dave, to, to make it a little simpler in the design criteria where they don't have to do all this engineering and stuff, but it seems like we're having to climb a hill with, with, I think we're not agreeing on, on what our intent was, and some of the requirements that you guys are asking of the developer who's agreed to go to five-acre lots, and I know, I know Mr. Gall was gonna bring, I asked him, Dale Bax was gonna come in and discuss it from their perspective, but, and Mr. Cronin, you, you had some points too.
I think you're, I think you and your staff are trying to work through it, and I give you, example, Mr. Dubre, you know, really, originally he was dealing with Ellie Marr, and Ellie Marr told him if he was gonna put more than five thousand square foot of disturbance, he'd have to get land disturbance permit, that means a twenty-five-foot road, two-hundred-foot long. And then she interpreted it to being that he would have to have engineering work on that road itself because of concern of, from developers putting in some standard roads. So basically, then I think he reached out to Mr., to Rich, and I think he also said that the pro, proportion changes you reference above are for stormwater management requirements, and they will not affect minor subdivisions. Minor subdivisions exempt from those requirements. For three-to-five acre lots, the county proposing storm management, so I think, I think Ellie kinda was confused on it and Rich straightened it out.
Yeah.
I contacted Mr. Dubre, I said, if you got any concerns, I'd like to know about them, I haven't heard any. The ones, what we were having with Michael McMenamy, who's doing a whole bunch of them in my district.
He's had a ton of them.
Yes.
He's doing them left and right.
Right. I, he, if I was a problem, Michael would know to call me, and I haven't heard from him. So I would say, in your all fairness to you guys, I think you're working it out, I don't think everybody knows them in your office as well as you and Rich do. So maybe that was a communication issue. The idea was to try to make these five-acre ones fiscally cheaper for the developers to do, they're, they're basically gonna have bigger lots so they're not making as much money, so you cut down on development standards, and then when you have five-acre lots, they don't use land scrapers and scrape everything clean, you got, you don't have as much runoff and other environmental issues.
Tree preservation.
Right, right. And going back on that, as far as tree preservation, I worked in one when I was at Alderman in St. Paul, and we did fifty percent. And there's a fine line between twenty-five and fifty, I see Brad, like that, but I tell you what, like what they did in that ground down along Guthrie Road, both with Tom Hughes' development and also that new one that's going in down in Hancock, that's a shame to take those, those old growth forests and doze them down. I like the idea, you guys talk about credits, it's the only thing that really got it, so maybe if you could talk to those guys, well, you know, we may give you a break on this rain garden or this thing here, if you leave more of those trees standing. I think that's a good way, a good way of doing it, if in practice, you guys can work that out with the developers.
Frankly, we just approved that with the three-acre subdivision before the, we even had the wording in place, we knew that there was an option here. We'd had, the neighbors had been complaining about the stormwater on this three-acre development, and so we worked with the, the developer to extend the buffers around the periphery to fifty feet and, in lieu of, you know, having to put in facilities or something like that. So it, it worked, it, that's a strategy that worked, everybody agreed to that, so.
I said, I don't have a problem as long as those people, those property owners aren't calling me and lighting me up on the phone over it, okay? And so, right now, I had some of that, but it's kinda gone away because I think you guys have been a little bit flexible with it.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, honestly, I, for, for my, my part, I've only, any issues that we've encountered, we've worked through, there was either miscommunication or, or just something was misunderstood in the, in the requirements. But up to this point, I, I've had really nothing but, but good feedback on the, on the minor subdivision process. So, you know, if you, if you're hearing other issues, please let us know.
I tell you what, the citizens up in my area are just extremely happy that we're doing that because they're really happy, instead of worried about having a Winnsville subdivision next to your house with four homes per acre, now they're looking, the rolling, hillsides are still gonna be there, and you're gonna have five-acre homesites, they're pretty happy about that. There's a place for those four homes per acre Winnsville subdivisions, my son lives in one, but not, the whole county don't need to be those, okay? So that's, that's, I don't have any other issues in my district.
Well, I don't know, Mr. Gall, on that, did you have any points you wanted to clarify or that, one on Highway T, or we settled on with that one, or?
No, I think we worked that out, but actually, what we agreed to is a thirty-five-foot setback, so they're, we were really helpful, we worked through it. I will tell you that Dale, who isn't here, he says he's having to do as much stormwater design for these subdivisions as he would do for, you know, more dense subdivision.
On a five-acre subdivision?
Yes. Now, I don't know, I don't know that that, I'm not an engineer, but I can, I can tell you, he did tell me that on more than one occasion, so, Mike, you may be able to share something about that, but he said it's a problem for.
And that's just what we were talking about, that we're gonna have to work on that, Mike, if we come to some agreement on if we can exclude the stormwater on five-acre lots.
In defense of Mike, he said that same thing to, in your defense, he said that same thing to Michael McMenamy, and I, and I questioned that, I think I might even copied it, I said, that's not the intent. And I think you worked that out with Michael, so.
Yeah, he, he made the same comment at the council meeting during, during the process, and we went back and found that, that wasn't being required. So, so I don't even know why, that, where that was coming from.
Mr. McMenamy's first subdivision you did with us, he started that as a regular process and as a preliminary plat, and that was engineered, it had engineered roads, sewers, all that kinda stuff. But once we passed the ordinance for the five-acre development, we had already approved all the plans, but we dropped all that, and all they had to do was record the plat, so that may be some of the confusion, but we don't require stormwater or.
Mr. McMenamy's a happy camper right now.
We don't require.
He's the largest landowner in my district, so you guys are doing a great job.
Again, we still require land disturbance during construction, if you disturb more than five thousand acres of, or five thousand square feet, and we still require protection of natural water sources, and we still require floodplain development permits in the floodplain. And then your connection to any county road or street would have to be permitted through the highway department, so really, those are the only things you still have to do in a five-acre.
And that's what we intended, what we didn't intend is what Ellie Marr said, if it's, you get a land disturbance, you gotta have the streets engineered, and I think you guys got that fixed up.
And I think also, some of the consulting engineering firms are new at this as well, not just our own staff, so there's, there's been some learning curve on this.
They can't believe how free this is.
It's working, it's, it's working well in District One, and the landowners are happy too, so I think.
I think Mr. Bax, real quick, was, that was in reference to the development on Church, and, and they had come in as a, a public street, and had gone through that whole process and then found out they could do the minor subdivision and switched, so.
I think my biggest concern about that was lack of notice to, to me and to my constituents who are just totally taken aback by the turn when the Planning and Zoning Commission had unanimously denied them their request to move forward, and then they turned around and filed it as a minor subdivision, sailed on through, and there wasn't notice given. But I, but their concerns, I think mainly as were addressed to me by one or two people out in that area, was the problem with stormwater runoff. And if that's being addressed, I mean, I think that should be addressed, because I think, weren't there like seventeen, around seventeen homes that were gonna be built out there?
I agree, that's correct.
That's in a floodplain though, wouldn't it?
It's in a floodplain. That was their concern.
That's actually in the five-hundred year.
It's five-hundred, but, it's not the floodplain.
So is that why, if it, if you exclude five-acre subdivisions for stormwater, however, if it's in a floodplain, then it.
Sure, you still have to get floodplain permits and things like that, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a motion that we wrap up this work session and take a bio break before our meeting?
I think, I think that's a very good motion. So we will adjourn this work session and be back in about four or five minutes. Thank you.